Okay. Seeing at 6:05, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we have the Zoom link as well as we are also recording for the YouTube website for the school district. So this will be a trial run for that, so bear with us. Again, the same rules apply. Anyone here in the auditorium? I would be calling on first and then I would be asking the Zoom members or the participants in the Zoom link from there on in. First agenda item will be the approval of the minutes, both public of August 4th of 2020 and August 11th of 2020. No. I don't think they could hear you Tim. No.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
A second.
Tim chose us in for the second. Yes. Do we have any comments, questions? Changes? Bridgette, did you have anything? I did not as well. And those are both public meeting minutes. If nothing further, all who was in favor of approving both August 4th and August 11th, public meeting minutes of 2020 signify by saying aye. Kathleen, will you be abstaining on that, on these votes? Yes. And on the 11th, Bruce, you'll be abstaining on those. So Bruce Gove will be abstaining on the August 11th meeting minutes along with Kathleen and Kathleen and Stacy only on the August 4th meeting minutes. Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is the COVID-19 regional update. And I believe that's with Dr. Bouffet.
It is. Are we doing this electronically? Or are we, were you included in your packet, the spreadsheet that I had submitted to Amanda?
The spreadsheet is included in their packets, Dr. Bouffet.
Okay, so I call your attention to that spreadsheet. And this is initial tries at this. If there's information that you want or would rather not see, this can be changed. The first shot was two weeks ago and I didn't get all the information that I've now included this time around. This is a, this is a just a stop view of what it is as of this morning. It changes overnight. And there are, there are some changes. I included our district, including both the schools and the communities, which have very small numbers, as you can see, a total of 13 cases in all five towns to date. And, and spread out accordingly, there is one active, one, one to four active cases. They, they, to avoid identifying and confidentiality, they put it that way. And then I expanded that to the other counties in the greater upper valley. And those numbers are there as, as well split up by each county, as well as comparison to the total New Hampshire. I'll give you a moment to just take a look at that. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer that. And then I have just a couple of comments. Hearing none?
Hold on. We're just looking around to see who wants to ask a question. Thank you, Dr. Bouffet, for putting this together. And this might be a question a little bit broader. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
How about now? Okay, thank you. So one piece of information that I think would be very important for a lot of us, one piece would be COVID numbers from schools we are playing against athletics. So, you know, if we know that if they have an outbreak in those communities, we can be aware of that. But again, I don't know if this is something that you would be able to look at or, you know, this communication with athletic directors, districts, or whatnot.
I could look at the community that those schools are in, which is where I got the ones for our towns. The, and I'd have to look at the sports schedule or get some about what's upcoming for the coming weeks. The they will, they will not include schools. That's from, you know, personal information that I know that we would all be aware if there were cases within the school that would be responded to, whether that be publicly or, or not.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Dr. Bouffet? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Bouffet, you can go on with your comments.
I just, the major summaries, we have very few cases in locally in the district and in the, in the upper valley. We are, as Dr., I'm getting an echo. As Dr. Chan put it earlier this week, we, we have, we are having very few cases, but there is continuing community spread. So I think we do need to be vigilant, keep a close eye on it and, and use this, the luxury of the time that we have to make sure that we are solid in our preventive measures.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bouffet. Anything further before we move on? Okay. At this time, I will open up to public comment. First of all, here in the auditorium, if there's anyone that wants to have a comment about anything personally on the agenda tonight. Seeing none, I will open it up to the members of the Zoom. I'm not seeing anyone, so pardon me if I miss you. I don't see any hands. Okay. Moving on, continuing with business, Educational Issues Committee meeting of August the 20th. Bridgette?
So we did meet last week. On Thursday, we had a couple of things on our agenda. Our first was just discussion with Principal Fitzgerald surrounding the Mascoma 101 class that's coming in or that they're starting this year. And just a little description on some of the resources that they're using, some of the choices behind having this, I think, kind of as a freshman year and the plan going forward. So they're going to do it this year and then we're going to get some feedback from staff and hopefully students to kind of see, was it helpful? Are there areas we can improve upon? And how we can continue to go forward with that? And the second topic had to do with confronting white nationalism in schools. And I'm going to let Tim speak to that.
Thank you, thank you, Bridgette. Everyone hear me okay? All right, cool. So we talked about, as we've been talking about, you know, race and race relations in America. I had come across this confronting white nationalism in schools. And so we discussed it and I would just, in your packet is the presentation that Nancy Murphy put together. And I just want to thank her again for putting that all together. She went through this whole curriculum and it's, it's really about being able to react when something pops up and being aware of behavior. You know, as it, as it is something that is important to recognize. And so, you know, in being better citizens and everything, we, we just felt we would take a look at it. And, you know, I think it's very powerful. It's, it's, it's a lot, it's heavy stuff, you know, and it's not like we're gonna go. What? There we go, this might be loose. It's really more about, you know, just being aware and just being tuned in to tactics that are used and stuff, because a lot of young men in the country are being recruited into these white nationalist groups. And so we, you know, we felt it's important to take a look at that role in our, as a school, what does that mean? So just go ahead and take a look at that pack, that presentation that Nancy put together. And then also there is a little cartoon that's attached or it's actually part of the minutes. It might be in your packet as well. It's a little short comic talking about the paradox of tolerance. And basically talking about how a tolerant society can tolerate everything. It must be a loose wire in here. Can you hear me? All right. A tolerant society can accept and tolerate everything except intolerance. Because when you accept and tolerate intolerance, then it eventually blocks everything out. And then the whole society becomes intolerant. So that was a little cartoon that I shared with Nancy that we found helpful. So that's what we did. And yeah, it, it was good and we'd be, you know, we wanted to talk, maybe bring it out more and you know, to have like a information night. So, yep.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone have questions in regards to EIC meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
So as my report this evening, you do have the school survey results. We'll start with looking at Canaan. We did see a decrease in the number of parents that selected the remote academy and did choose to send their kids to the physical school. We will take that as a compliment to the strong plans that we had in place. But it did mean that as principals, we did have to shuffle and to adjust a little bit to, in, you know, to be able to keep that social distancing piece along with now having more students than we had originally anticipated. We were able to do that pretty comfortably at the middle school with dropping down. Mr. Toll had originally thought he was going to have two teachers working in the remote academy. Instead, the numbers indicated he only needed one. So we did have a change there. So you'll see in Canaan that, you know, kindergarten, first grade together, they had about 20 students that will be going out to the remote academy, leaving in-person classrooms at classroom of 12 students and 11 students and then 14 students and 14 students at those two classrooms. Moving down through, the numbers that I really paid attention to are the numbers of classroom, of students in each classroom. So we know that Leah is comfortable with fitting 17 to 18 kids, depending on which room. And she is now able to look at 15 being her largest number. So we feel pretty comfortable with the physical distancing that we're able to achieve at the Canaan Elementary School. I will note that preschool will be down to just a morning class. And then we will have Kyle Adet working on the remote academy with kindergarteners. Any questions about the Canaan Elementary School? Moving on, the next chart that you have is the Enfield Village School. We did have to do some shuffling to accommodate here. You can see that the numbers under each teacher's name indicate how many students that teacher will have in her classroom. Some classrooms are comfortable, you know, 13. You do have a blank spot there because we did add a first grade classroom. So we do have nine students in there. But once again, we're holding to less 15 or less students in a classroom. Also preschool for the Enfield Village School is the next page. And you can see that we are down to five three-year-olds in the morning and seven three-year-old, four-year-olds, rather, excuse me, in the morning, which means that we will also use the preschool teacher to teach a remote kindergarten out of Enfield Village School. Any questions on Enfield Village School? Moving on to the Indian River School. Mr. Toll has written out in paragraph form. So you're seeing that 15 students in each classroom for the fifth grade. And we have 19 students, that's a pretty strong showing in the remote academy. Grade six, we have 13 students in each classroom and 17 enrolled in the remote academy. Seventh grade, 15 students in the in-person learning and 21 in the remote academy. That is the largest class I believe that we have in the entire district. And in eighth grade, we have 14 students and in person in four classroom, in each classroom and 20 students enrolled in the remote academy. So some very solid remote academy numbers, different though from the numbers in the high 30s that he had originally seen. So. And then we move on to the high school. If there are no questions on Indian River. So here you have ninth graders and Mr. Fitzgerald has broken it down. So the Monday, Thursday, we'll have 49 ninth graders here. The Tuesday, Friday, 42. He has eight students that will be headed out. So he's asking kids if they are in the remote, the Mascoma Remote Academy, which would mean receiving instruction from our teachers or if they are choosing to join V-Lax. So that's the difference. That's why you have some undecideds here. So we're just waiting to see if those undecided kids were choosing V-Lax, which allows for a more flexible schedule where the Mascoma Remote Academy would have a more rigid schedule for those students. So you can see that we have very, on the bottom, the Monday, Thursday would have a total of 161 students in the building. And Tuesday, Friday, we would have 145 students in. The next page does show the high school's block scheduling. And these are the actual blocks with the full numbers that are in. So you can see that we did have some high numbers of students, 24, 24, 22, 21. So when you're starting to talk about those numbers, this is what really led to the decision to go to the AB cohort. We just could not physically distance 24 kids safely in. And then if you're looking at the number 29, it's a very large class. There was no way with, you know, too many classes to adequately use the auditorium or the cafeteria. So if we'd had a few of the larger classes, we could have done that. But for right now, until we can figure out how to socially distance and to, and to make sure kids can move in this building safely, we have gone with the AB cohort. I've been telling a lot of parents, because there was some concern over it, that this is a soft opening for us. Our high school is undergoing a soft opening. We will be revisiting it and revising it at the end of the quarter, depending on COVID conditions, depending on, you know, how many kids are ready to come back. But this is a soft opening with the goal to have all the students back in the school before the end of the year. So I just want parents in the board to understand that, that we are erring on the side of caution just because of our high numbers in classes right now. But we are watching and trying to make sure that we get all the kids back in every day. The final page that you have are the sample numbers that Mr. Fitzgerald shared with you before. So looking at one English class, for instance, on Monday, Thursday, they'd have 14 students with one of those students being a remote learner. So they'd have 13 students in the classroom, that physically in the classroom that day. And Tuesday and Friday, they would have eight. So not an exact break, the way he shuffled by letter, last name of the alphabet, but a pretty good guesstimate as to how many kids we could get in each classroom. Any questions about any of the data I've shared with you?
Hi, so my question on, real quick on IRS, you said that he had thought he only needed one remote teacher, but reading this, it sounds like there would be two remote teachers.
Other way around, Tim. So he thought he could use, the original data showed he had 36, 37, 38 kids that wanted the remote academy. So he had designated two teachers to the remote academy. When the true numbers came in, when we had people commit, the numbers were at the 19, 20 range. So he had to scale back and put another teacher back in the classroom.
Oh, so wait, so that, what that means is that it's not actually, so it's like grade six has 13 for a classroom with five teachers for 17 students enrolled remote with one teacher for math and another for all content. So does that, how does that work out? Does that mean that there's going to be an online, a remote academy only math teacher?
That is correct.
And then also a remote academy only, everything else teacher?
Yes. Okay, so you'll have a grade, a grade teacher. And then you have, we are using Mr. Geeson differently rather than the computer teacher, if you will. So that has allowed Mr. Toll to move around some math teachers. And Mr. Geeson will be teaching math in seventh grade, I believe. And then we'll be using another teacher to teach all sections of math for the remote academy.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's, that answers my question. And then I think that was it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on Amanda's presentation? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Amanda. Move on to Deborah Ford, our business administrator with her report.
How about now? Thank you, Cookie. So you have the financials for July in your board packet. I have added in the warrant article for the teacher agreement of 315,462 to the $28,975 or $928,000 budget. So I still have some areas to transfer. We've gone from some contracted services to employees and vice versa. So I need to transfer money. You probably noticed that more in the special ed budget. I've also included the capital reserves fund. I did send off the transfers that were voted for the capital reserves, but apparently the mail is fairly slow, so they did not receive those until a month later. So they'll show up in the August report. I don't think I have anything else to share on the budget. I'm still working with the home ad security money, but they are on hold right now. So I did submit the June expenses for COVID. I know there may be some other money available, so I'm, I'm keeping those in a separate fund right now. But if that does not come back as they put it on hold, then I will have to reclass some of our COVID expenses into the general fund. Any questions on the financials for July?
Okay, Bridgette?
So I'm just curious as far as clarity, since this is obviously your specialty. But, you know, my eyes get kind of drawn towards anything, obviously, that's beyond budget. So I wasn't sure as far, you know, like the top line, the service awards. Was that something that just numbers went up and it just shifted around? So our, what we budgeted for obviously was not what the exact was.
Right, so that was a combination. I looked back to see what had happened there. And we had quite a few letters by the end of October that went into the budget. But I think we received, people can submit letters until December 1st and the budget was not updated for the last couple of letters. Plus, we also had a couple of people retire that we had not planned on. And then this year, as you probably noticed, everybody that said, that put in to retire decided that they would retire. So that doesn't usually happen. So I try to not budget too much in there. But yeah, you, you can see that we had a few more people retire than we had budgeted for. Correct.
Okay, anything else?
It's unfortunate that it's the top line.
I know. Sticks right out there.
Well, and I was not meaning as like a negative, not wanting to do it. It was just figured that was the issue.
No, that's a legitimate question. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, educational funding in New Hampshire. Tim?
Nothing new as of right now, but they are still meeting. But it's kind of cool. Now it's all virtual, right, y'all online? So I think they've been able to get quite a bit of work done. Just walking along.
Thank you, Tim. Public comment response update. I think we've been pretty up to date on all of those responses. I think the email with the monitoring with Danielle helping with that has been suburbs. I know it's settled down a lot in the last week or so.
Yeah, I would just say Cookie, if there's someone that feels that they didn't get an accurate, accurate or a response at all, that they should contact me and let me know. Otherwise, I would assume, I did parcel out quite a few of those emails. So I would assume that they have been answered to people's satisfaction.
Okay.
And I, I would just say that the, having the frequently asked questions updated and several of those things, I think, has, has really helped.
I want to thank Tom for sending out that letter. In regards to the Hartford questions and that was right in tune to being, this is exactly what the plan is, this is what your student should do, this is what you should anticipate. So it was clearly written and that was appreciated because there was just too much hearsay out there. So he did that and I appreciate that. I don't think we have anything else on public comment. New business, we have bus routes to review for the 2020, 2021. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Tim because I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay, so we have our bus routes for approval. And are there any comments, questions, or concerns on those?
Tim, would you like a little bit of a background on them? So I, I will just jump in and say that these were bus routes that were given to the district in July before John Catanzaro did resign his position. So we are still waiting for Butler's Bus to hire a new dispatcher for our school. I had a discussion with Steve today about the need to get that person hired and into the district. We do have families now calling, as they always do this time of year, to request new stops. So that's another issue I have also sent to Steve because he's our contact person for now. The information that we received from the surveys about parents who said they would still need to have their children picked up by the bus. And at this time, we only had a few buses that looked to be over capacity of 25. So we looked like we were in pretty good shape. But the routes that you have before you are subject to change as the routes often are, as we add and delete stops. So if you ask me if these were COVID-approved stops or if buses would be stopping at every single one of those listed, I cannot guarantee that as we've asked parents to really transport their students.
Okay. So as we're looking at here, we have our various routes. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns from the board? Hope?
One of the questions I had when I was looking at this, it looks, it appears that on the arrival, there's a staggered arrival. Is there plans for staggered departures?
The, each school has a plan to get their students out classroom by classroom. So that would be how at the elementary school, they would be walking students out to the bus that way. I believe that is the same at the Indian River School. They'd be walking their students out. I'm not really sure, I'll be honest, on the way that Mr. Fitzgerald planned on staggering his bus students. But I think he's a little, he has quite a few less students that ride the bus. So I think most of your students drive or ride with a friend. So he would be able to adequately distance those students as they loaded to the bus.
Okay, there I am. Yes, Danielle?
And I'm assuming that this would be not the final bus route. So will there be a revision after we have the start of, after we have the return to in-person schooling so that drivers can keep track of what the stops actually are? Or will these just be the posted routes? Or will these just be the posted routes and it kind of is what it is, depending on who's doing in-person school that needs transportation?
So this is round number one.
Yeah.
Right? And I, I think I would dare to guess that these are very similar routes to what was, has posted last spring. But we do often go through route change after route change after route change. And I would expect that to only be more significant this year. I would expect a significant change after quarter one, should we start to really bring more students back. I, we do have some differences in kids coming to school as opposed to kids leaving, and there will be a flux of those as sports are on or off. So yes, I would think this is version one of probably 500 versions of the bus routes that you will see this year.
One more thing, just to follow up from last night's high school fall sports info session. Just for anyone out there who wasn't at the meeting last night, it was mentioned that there will be no additional routes for students who are on their remote days. If they're participating in, in sports or in any other after-school activity type things, the parents are in charge of getting them back to campus. And there won't be any, like, driving directly to game, away games, or anything like that because of the requirements for the temperature screening and other screen, and symptom screening before our buses and our athletes leave to go to another location. So just to, just to make sure that folks know that if, if your student isn't here, it's, it's your responsibility to get them here.
That is a very good point. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns about bus, bus routes? And like you said, this is the first half. You know, after the first couple weeks, it takes a tweak, you know, which students are coming in? Because you might have parents who said, oh, yeah, they'll take the bus. And then after two days, they're like, nope, off the bus. So, you know, we'll see how it goes. And, yeah, so just looking for a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve them as presented tonight.
I'll second that.
All right, that was Bridgette with the first and Danielle with the second. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And abstaining? And Cookie Hebert abstains. Thank you, and I'll hand the meeting back over.
Thank you, Tim. Equity settlement review. Is that, or a statement review? Okay, I believe, Bridgette, you wrote this? And has the board members been able to read it? And I ask that everyone would sign this to show solidarity in regards to the board. So I'll look for a motion to accept, and then we'll sign, and then we'll go out.
I'll make a motion that we accept this, the, the letter as presented.
Second.
Tim Josephson for the motion, Daniel Thompson for the second. Do we have any discussion on this letter? Kathleen?
Where's the letter being sent? There's no print to where it's going.
So it's not being sent anywhere. It's for posting on the website. So really, it would go on like the school.
On the website.
Of the site.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to support the letter signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose and abstentions, and it carries. Thank you. Do we have one that has to be signed? Like, did Martha send a specific one, or should we just sign one of these?
Yours would be great, Cookie.
Okay, I'll start. I'll send it this way first. Need this? All right, so also in our packet, we have the school readiness report. And I believe that'll be Deb.
Well, why don't I just jump right in on the school readiness report? So we do typically give you a report on the condition of the buildings, and we feel that that has really been handled by finance and facilities. So rather than talk about all the painting again and all the, you know, newness and cleanness and crispness and disinfecting that we've done, I'd like to just spend a minute and talk about how the first day of school went. Very, very, very proud of Maskoma today. We had a lovely luncheon on the football field. Thankfully, the graduation squares are still there, so people could easily socially distance around those squares, knowing they're nine-by-nines with six feet aisles in between each. So that was very lovely. The rain held off. We had a tremendous showing of faculty and staff at this luncheon. And, you know, it is difficult to, you know, in the time of COVID, to be in a large gathering, but people were appropriate. They were physically distanced. They wore masks when necessary. It was just a very, very nice, I kept it very simple. I think we were only there for 40 minutes. But it was a nice way to introduce everyone. We were able to give out the service, service award pins, or those years of service pins. And we did acknowledge Nancy Murphy at 45 years. So that's a noteworthy amount of time to spend in one job or in one company, if you will, call us a company. And then we did go so far as to give Linda Landry her 50-year pin. So upon the completion of this year, Linda Landry will have been with this district for 50 years. So it was very nice. We have a press release that has gone out. We have some further questions. And it would be my hope that WMUR would notice that and would come and do a little piece on her. So I think that would be, that's something pretty impressive. 50 years is, is, is really pretty awesome, if you ask me. So people were energized, there was a lot of positive energy. People are ready to get their classrooms and their work areas set up. So I would say that we are very fortunate to be here in Maskoma, and we will be ready when those kids come on September 8th.
Great, thank you. I would like to also just mention that I'd like to publicly thank Amanda for all her hard work. It's been an exceptional ride. But I would like to thank her for believing in Maskoma and staying here and dealing with all of us. But I also would like the staff to know how appreciative we are of everything they've had to do, endure, and that, again, for believing in Maskoma and for riding the way, the wave with us. So I, I think it's just been a phenomenal way of getting things going. And can't wait for September 8th and get these kids here and get things going again. Get some normalcy somehow in their lives. Okay, so moving on to the DOE 25 and MS 25. Now that's you, Deb.
That is me. You're correct. So in your packet, you have a copy of the DOE 25, which is the annual report for the state that I do each year. And also part of that is the MS 25. So I know, I, I just finished these yesterday. They're due on September 1st. So that was my goal, to get them in. If you have questions after you have a chance to look at this further, I know you haven't had it very long, feel free to email me. But this, this gives the state an idea of how much we spent compared to other school districts. And they do compile all this information together and send us a report for the whole state. But it also gives you an estimate of the per pupil cost, which is on the final page. Interestingly enough, the elementary school per pupil cost is more than the high school for this past year. And, and I do think that has to do with, a lot to do with special ed. But they're, they're pretty close at 20,900, 20,700. So usually, the elementary has been a little bit less. But this year, they're pretty close. So I do need you all to sign both of these. There's a place for the school board chairperson, the superintendent, and then the other lines, you may sign wherever you'd like.
Okay, so while those are coming around, next on the agenda is agenda items for the next meeting. And that will be on September 8th, correct? Yes. I'm sure. First day. Yes. Finance and facilities.
Yep.
We'll also have a co-curricular meeting.
Okay. I don't think we have anything. Do we have any type of presentation or anything that we'd be looking to do? Not at this time, I don't.
I don't think at this time, Cookie.
Yeah, okay. All right. So if anything comes up, we can always adjust the agenda. I will open it up to the public comment. Public comment here in the auditorium first? Is anyone? Diane?
Can you hear me now? I do want to say on behalf of the faculty of the high school, as well as, I'm hoping, the other schools as well, as we do feel really prepared and safe coming back. We're really excited to come back. We really appreciate all that you've done to make this possible for us.
Thank you. We appreciate the staff as well. All right, so is there anyone on the Zoom link that would like to make a comment? You can just raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. The next on the agenda is personal resignation and nominations.
We do have some of those, Cookie. I do have the paperwork coming around right now.
Okay, thank you.
So in front of you, you do have a long list of our tried and true and trusty professional development representatives, as well as our teacher mentors. A fairly long list of teacher mentors, as we do have quite a few new staff. So they're all, those are all people who have fulfilled these rules for us before, and we are very thankful that they continue to fulfill them and be dedicated to the district. Two resignations, or retirements, if you will. We did lose Kathy Reed and Barbara Sirockin. We wish them well. And then two volunteers that were approved, also on the bottom. New volunteers, those are new volunteers.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the nominations as presented and the staff resignations and retirements with regret?
Still moved.
Tim Josephson?
I have a second.
Bridgette LeBree for the second? Anyone have any questions or comments?
Do you, do you need me to second?
Yes, I think, I think Bridgette will be abstaining from this vote, and I think Danielle will second it.
Oh, yes.
Mom. Mom.
All right, so Daniel Thompson will second that motion. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to accept the staff nominations as presented and the staff resignations, retirements with regret? Signify by saying aye. Noes, abstentions? Bridgette LeBree for the abstention. Do we have any non-public for tonight?
We do have non-public for the purposes of hiring and reputation.
I'll make a motion that we go into non-public in accordance with RSA 91-a, colon, three, Roman 2a and b.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll do a roll call vote. Brewster Goff, Bridgette LeBree, Tim Josephson.
Yes.
Danielle Thompson.
Yes.
Kathy and Stacy.
Yes.
Hope Strike now?
Yes.
And Cookie Hebert, yes.
Give me just a second to remove everybody and put them in the waiting room. Everybody who's here in the public, if you would like to remain and be joined back in after the non-public session, just sit in the waiting room, and I'll invite you back in when non-public is over. Thank you. All right, Cookie, I believe everybody's back.
Okay, thank you, Kami.
Make a motion that we accept the nominations and resignations with regrets as presented.
Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Okay. Just nothing further? Like to take a vote? All those in favor of the staff nomination as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose and abstentions? 700, Kim? Not this one. And the only other thing we have? Seth? I'll wait for her to come in. Okay, moving on. We have some memorandums of agreement that Amanda can probably fill us in on, and I believe you need a motion.
So yes, Cookie, could we, yeah, could you put a motion? I'm sorry, I'll let you keep going, put a motion to discuss those.
Yeah. So I'll ask for a motion so we can discuss this. So there's three of them. And I would like to also include in the headings on these reopening, remote, and health and safety, three different topics.
I'll make a motion that we accept the memorandum of agreement between SAU 62 and the MVR EA, MVR SSA. In the, there's three of them, one reopening, remote, and health and safety.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Bridgette? Okay, we can discuss, Amanda?
Sure, so thank you for adding that to the agenda, agenda tonight. I appreciate the board's time in doing that. This is a fairly time-sensitive impact bargaining piece. So this is with the, with the changes due to COVID and with the reopening plans, we have kind of altered working conditions slightly as per what, what has. have kind of altered working conditions slightly as per what, what has, have been our normal practices. So that gives both of the unions the opportunity to bargain with us and negotiate on what those reopening plans, not necessarily the plans itself, but what their working conditions may look like. So if you're wondering why, in a non-negotiating year, we are looking at some impact bargaining, we are truly doing that to look at the impact that the change in working conditions created by COVID and the new reopening plan have on our faculty and staff here in Mascoma. This situation is not unique to Mascoma. This has been something that has happened in every district throughout the state, and I would dare say throughout the country. So I would give people a chance to look through that. This was, took quite a bit of time. I feel that both parties worked well to explain their thoughts on either side of this. So there was a lot of open discussion about, well, why do you, why, tell me more, is often what I ask, to tell me more about what you're proposing. And so we were able then to work together to look at how we could create some language and to create a feeling of safety for the staff and still allowing us to be able to open and run the school. So I felt that it was a very productive work session with everyone. So I would take any specific questions people may have. I know this is a lot of information that is thrown at you, but I think both Cookie and Tim will tell you, can attest to the fact that we worked pretty hard to make sure that our kids would be, and Deb too, Deb was, Deb was there too.
Yeah.
You know, that we worked well, you know, worked very hard to make sure that the staff felt safe and protected. We were very fortunate that a lot of the things were already handled in our plan, very much reflected in our plan. So, now we take any questions, Cookie or Tim, if you all wanted to jump in.
I think it was a very productive session. You know, everyone worked on both sides, what little we could give, what little they could give, but the main concern and the main focus was get these kids here and safely deal with them in every aspect, from, you know, dropping off in the morning, car rider, bus rider, to the dismissal, to being out on the playground, and of course, being in the classroom. So I would like to just say thank you for being so proactive for our kids and for the safety of themselves. So I think we worked everything out, and, you know, Tim can probably add.
I just agree with everything Cookie and Amanda have said. It really, you know, it's a testament to how well we can all work together and communicate. And just like Amanda said, like, tell me more, what do you need and what, what can we do? And going back and forth and just having a dialogue, it was very constructive. And like you said, everything, you know, a lot of the teachers were involved in the plan making for the reopening, so that helped. And just to be clear, that this has no fiscal impact, and this is just, this is just like working conditions and like agreements and things like that. I did have a question, just a clarification really, because I know this was a sticking point, or this is a, students that go to the remote academy at the high school, they'll be able to live, be video live with the teachers because their cohorts that are at home on those days will also be doing the same thing? Is that the, is that what we got out? I mean, is that the final place that we got to?
I do believe the high school teachers heard and understood that, Tim. I'm just looking for the exact language in here.
I think I found it.
Which, do you think it is?
You're talking page three?
Page three.
Yeah. I'm sorry, which one?
Number four on page three.
Yeah.
This report requires employees to record live video or audio lessons. Employees will not be recorded without their consent.
That is correct, Tim.
And so that way, kids can, can tune in at home on the remote academy and be just like they're there and ask questions, interact, because that was a concern.
Yeah, we were very thankful. I was very thankful that the high school teacher said they were comfortable doing that. It was really about not making people do things that they were uncomfortable with. And so, yes.
Absolutely. Again, talking it out and coming to an agreement is important.
Okay, is there anything else?
This is a tentative agreement. These have been tentatively agreed to, so yes.
Yeah.
Sure. I didn't do it, so sure.
It's never personal when I point them out. I just noticed on page three and number two, where it says the district will establish time limits, students, is it four students or?
Which, which, which one? The remote reopening, health and safety?
Curriculum content and scheduling on page three. Sorry, room out.
What's your number, Bridget?
Number two on the bottom, the curriculum content and scheduling.
Oh, four students, two engage. Got it.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor accepting the motion to accept the memorandum of agreements between the unions in regards to reopening, remote, and health and safety, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? 700, Kami. I don't believe there's any other business. I think that was the last piece that we had to bring out tonight. And I'll call the meeting adjourned at 7:21. Thank you, everyone.